All right, so we appointed Diane to serve for Bruce until he shows up. We think he's going to show up. But anyway, and we don't have the minutes because they're in someplace of the prior meeting. So, and we have
Bruce.
Actions. We have
A little late, but here.
Oh, Bruce, okay. Okay, Diane, Bruce is replacing you, okay?
Bruce, you're kicking me out. Okay.
Thank you for your contribution, Diane.
I was here to help.
And we have no minutes to approve yet, and we have only what is this? It's old business, new business. Okay, it's spaced. New business is the notice of an application for text amendments to schedule a public hearing. We don't have to do anything other than note that the public hearing for considering the moratorium on cannabis establishment will be on the 18th. Okay, General Commission Business zoning reorg bill discussion and possible actions. Laura, I think that was a great summary that you put together and
Thank you.
Yeah, that was great.
I don't really have a lot of comments on that. Except we probably ought to look at them. Does anybody have any questions, any of the items, or you want to discuss them one by one?
I'll offer something to start. I just thought that, you know, the first one, attached ADUs require site plan approval. You know, our current, and then under detached ADUs, that's where we were looking for, Dave, some comments on this stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. What I thought that, something that, you know, when you look at the state and other stuff written about this, the fact that the special exception requires a public hearing, I think that deserves mention here because that's a very controversial element of what we're doing, that it requires a public hearing. Whereas, we offered the distinction that for attached ADUs, they don't require a public hearing, but we don't say that. So I just suggest that the presentation becomes a little fuller if under attached ADUs, you know, the site plan approval, you know, maybe with just some parenthetic statement, no public hearing required. And then the reverse, the next point down had, you know, under the detached ADUs require a special exception, including a public hearing, you know, something like that.
Right.
Because everybody doesn't know the finer aspects of site plan versus public.
Right. And that's a giant issue. Public hearing, apparently, people are, you know, looking forward to some action, you know, consistent with the state. That's one of the major elements.
And the state, the state action doesn't require a public, a site plan approval or
Right.
exception. It's as of right.
Yeah, right.
And it doesn't say anything about attached or detached.
Right. Yeah.
So, and I think there's a distinction there. I mean, we have a case on East Wheaton Street where a garage just turned into a second house.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. But anyway, that's where it is. And I think that sort of thing can happen very easily under under the state mandated as of right rules. But that's a consideration that I think we all ought to recognize and discuss whether we like it or not. And listen to the public and what they have to say about it, which we will have to do, I think. Before we can do anything, we have to have a public hearing.
So your suggestion, Davis, or maybe, I don't want to mistake this, but it seems like we might even be better off if we're not mischaracterizing anything if you go over to the other column of legislative change and identify the fact that there's no public hearing under any circumstances under the state.
Or even a site plan. You just come in and say, here's what I want to do. And that was clearly their intention. They want to be able to kind of blow up single-family zoning. And I think our constituents are, I don't know, I don't think they're in favor of that.
Yeah, I think the bigger one that will concern them is the no resident requirement. So you could put an ADU on your property and then move out until you'd have two rentals.
Yep.
And I think that would concern most neighbors and more than any of the other stuff. But the timeframe here is very tight because we have to pass it through public hearing and then selectmen have to pass it through public hearing.
Right. So I don't know, do the selectmen have to have a public hearing for this? Might be.
Yes, they will. They will have to have a public hearing and vote on it. It has to be a two-thirds majority.
On a moratorium?
No, no, no.
Not on the moratorium, on whether we opt out of the state.
Right, right.
Yeah. Separate utilities.
Would you want me to pull it up and screen share it so we can look at it all at the same time, or do you all have it in front of you?
Yeah, that'd probably be best in case there are people watching it.
Okay.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Well, in case there's thousands of people watching us.
Right.
It's also SCTV, maybe. Okay, well, we've talked about the first section or two. I think I have to scroll. Do I have to scroll to go?
Laura has to scroll.
I am scrolling down now.
Okay, now that gives us the first page. There is me.
Thank you.
Yeah. One, at least one ADU as of right in districts which allow apartments, accessory apartments. Now, that's an interesting thing. Do, if we don't allow accessory apartments anywhere, then does the state thing go away?
You would have to opt out for it because anything after this date, if you choose not to opt out, any of your regulations that go against it become null and void.
But I'm looking at the, at the fourth one down where it says one ADU per lot. And then it says one ADU as of right in districts which allow accessory apartments. What does that mean, which allow accessory apartments?
So right now, all of our residential districts allow accessory apartments. So it would be allowed in any place where a single-family dwelling is allowed.
It doesn't apply to business districts and other zones.
Correct.
But if we, if we removed the ADU from a residential district, what would that do for us?
Well, if you wanted to go ahead and change the zoning regulations, I still believe you have to opt out of the legislative changes and rewrite them. So you would have to still do some kind of text amendment for the change.
Right.
If you're going against anything that's null and void. You could do that.
I don't think that's a practical thing. I'm just looking at the language. I think you're, you're very accurate in your statements here. And I'm using every word to interpret the meaning. Okay, ADU shall be accessible by an operable door. They prohibit requiring that. Which was, I think, aimed at trying to make the ADU in Simsbury more family-oriented, or at least rented to people that you trust and know. Parking, anybody have any comments about that? Does that?
And that's not significantly different. You got to have one spot either way.
Well, it is different in that we could always require more.
Yeah.
But the other state provision is you can require one, but you can't require more.
Well, and our language specifically says it's off-street. Theirs does not.
Hmm.
That's significant.
Good point.
So Laura, Mike, do you think that says that you could have a street parking spot for an ADU unit, ADU unit, under the state law?
Laura, do you want to start? See if we agree?
I think that means that you can. That there's not, it's not requiring a dedicated spot off-streets.
I mean, you can't dedicate spots that belong to the public. It's not the owner's property to designate for anything. I can't see how that could be the case, that they can, you know, take control of and in effect, reserve for sole use. And if not reserved for sole use of, you know, the ADU, then what good is it?
I don't think that was the intention on what they mean by this.
Well, I don't know what they meant, but I'm looking at what they wrote in a sense. I know you've, I don't know the wording you're using exactly what was in the but I get the point.
Anyway, that's, that's not a big deal between the states, I don't think. I think the main things here on this page are the first line, which I think is very different from what we want now. The next thing down is the ADU size of 1,000 or 30%. I think that's what we had in our prior version of these regs. And we cut them down in the last go-round because of public input. I think that's my recollection. Does everybody, Mike, you agree?
Dave, you are correct. If you recall, we had a few that, you know, from 1,000 square feet, there were two bedroom units. That's the other thing you think of. When you go, when you're going up to 1,000 square feet, you could put a two-bedroom unit in, in 1,000 square feet. So what we were hearing, the complaints were, were, hey, this is more than what we want to see in a single-family neighborhoods. And the commission kind of reduced it to 600 square feet. So it becomes more of a in-law apartment and efficiency unit that is, you know, kind of contained versus the 1,000-square-foot two-bedroom apartment.
Right. And the next, the next line is our attempt to knit the thing, the the resident, the ADU closer to the family by making them share the primary utilities. We all seem to think that that was a a good constraint to prevent people from just willy-nilly renting things.
But there is a page two to this.
Yep. We, we didn't have any, we didn't feel that you could mandate a relationship like that, is the first line. We never considered a minimum age.
Yep. Oh, we, I, well, I was going to say, I thought we had, and maybe it, you know, it sort of lapsed over from the short-term rentals discussions. But I thought we were setting a minimum age to make the contract, contracted the relationship established by the contract, the lease, whatever you call it, with the ADU tenant and the owner of the property. To make that valid, it's got to be an adult.
But we haven't, we didn't make any, we didn't make anything in our regs about that.
Maybe we should go back and fix that because you can't have children signing contracts and think they're going to be able to be they'll lose the dispute.
We don't, I don't think we have to mandate that kind of thing. I mean, that's a normal law.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you can have a child signing a contract and, you know, you're right about that.
I think they were going more for, you can't say it's 55 and over or something.
Oh, yeah.
They were going more for the senior than for the juvenile.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Prohibits periodic renewals, that's not a problem with us, I don't think. We don't have anything like prohibiting ADUs or making ADUs more restrictive.
Regarding the setbacks and
Yeah.
the points that are made here, right.
The only thing we did say was that it has to be behind the house, right? Doesn't it say we have to be behind the house, the main house?
For detached?
Yeah.
So that's, that speaks to detached, but if there's an internal ADU, doesn't change anything outside, yeah.
Right.
Right, but the detached one, I can't remember if we had a restriction on being in the in the side or rear.
In your general zoning restrictions, you don't allow accessory structures in the front yard unless it meets very specific requirements anyway. So perhaps you didn't touch it because of that?
Okay. Yeah, we don't have any problem with that kind of thing. Fire thing, it's nothing. May regulate the use of ADUs as short-term rentals. That's interesting. And we can regulate the architectural design as long as it doesn't exceed standards that normals, single-family dwellings have. Yeah, and our, this current, the next thing is the current regulations require the property owner to live near the ADU or the principal dwelling. I think that's an important consideration here that our residents, constituents strongly support. So we have to have a public hearing. We have to decide to opt out. Requires a two-thirds vote from us, and we have to have a public hearing beforehand. So it would seem to me that we, if we really want to proceed on this, we should schedule a public hearing. Anybody, what do people feel about that?
So I might be the only person who doesn't quite understand this opt-out. So if this provision says we can't do this and we can't do that, what does the opt-out do for us?
Lets us use our own existing regulations for ADUs.
Except if they don't match what was just legislated, then how does that work?
No, no.
If we have a public hearing and we choose to opt out of the legislation, we basically, we get to continue doing what we were doing prior to the ratification of this, this bill. So your existing regs stay in place, no changes, nothing's considered null and void.
So what is good, what, what good is the bill then, if everybody can opt out?
So it puts the, it puts the burden on them at the local level to fight the fight rather than the legislature. The legislator just threw the grenade over the fence to the local authorities.
And then do you, once you opt out, do you set yourself up for any kind of lawsuits based on the legislation versus what you have? No.
No, you know, once, once you opt out, you know, basically, like I said earlier, those provisions of this, of this public act do not apply to your zoning regs. But it's the, the, the process, as Laura outlined, is the legislature is basically saying, well, let it be a community decision, meaning you went through a public hearing process. You didn't just say, I want to just ignore the, ignore the law.
But as a community, you can.
Yes.
Okay.
What, provided you have the two things, you had the public hearing and there's a two-thirds vote by both the zoning commission and the legislative body to say, yep, we're getting out of this.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, I don't know, Donna, you're also poking around at the question of, I don't know that is this, is this really saying it's all or nothing? Either you're in and we're subject to every word written into the state statute, or you know, can we pick and choose, opt out of some provisions and therefore accept the others?
I think we could pick and choose, right?
And that would be an opt-out.
I, that would be an opt-out.
Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
Write your text amendments and change your zoning regulations. So the process for that would be to opt out of it in its entirety and then amend your zoning regulations to reflect whatever legislative changes you agree with.
Yeah, and I'd almost would say maybe to go back on to Laura's, on the first page of Laura's memo and maybe ask what points of the change really give members of the commission heartburn? Because then maybe it's, that's where we could say, okay, so our sticking point is, you know, let's say the first three points. Well, we disagree with those. We prefer our regulations, but the rest of the changes, we can live with. Then I would say kind of what, what Laura kind of said. If that's the path that the commission were to agree upon, we'd have a public hearing to opt out. After we opted out, we'd have, we'd have a second public hearing, basically to amend our regulations, include the portions of the statute that we agree with. And then, let's just say, like, for example, the maximum size, we want to stick with 600 square feet, we will. And it should, what I also say is not just stuff that we agree with, but it could be stuff that we have to, you know, we don't, we do not object to the changes like the shared utilities. Yep, we'll delete that out of our current regulations.
But it becomes us modifying our regulations rather than
It was more within additional public hearing or hearings. Because each of the text amendments we do is going to require more public hearings.
Correct. In order to change, we'd be modifying our regs, not the state, not adhering to the state statute. And anyway, so where do we stand? I think we're at the point, we've got to move, we either should schedule a public hearing or not. Kevin, what do you think?
Well, I think we should go ahead with the public hearing. I'm actually getting concerned about the whole schedule because we don't meet, the next time we meet is what, the second, third week of November?
Right.
Do we have an early, we don't meet the first week because that's the day before Election Day, right?
Right.
So we're the end of November, and assuming that we approve that night, you're not giving the board of selectmen sufficient time to do a public hearing. And they need public notice in order to do their public hearing.
Well, the date of this is actually 2023, January 1st, 2020.
I was thinking it was the 22, okay. Did I miss read that? All right, I thought we were really up against a wall. Okay.
No.
All right, thank you.
Otherwise, doesn't look like we could make it.
No, that's what I was thinking. I was really getting worried here.
That year will go by quick, though.
Yes.
It will. So I would go with the, I, you know, we talked about last time about, you know, we want input from all these other people. But I was thinking it was a short notice, but yes, I would go ahead and schedule a public hearing so we can get the public's input.
Mike?
I absolutely agree with what Kevin just said. There's no way we can move forward without having a public hearing.
I'm going clockwise around my screen.
I'm absolutely for having a public hearing. I think it's very, very important to bring the people into the discussion and know what it's about and where we're coming from.
Bruce?
First, just as an aside, something has happened to my screen. The Zoom company's taken over my screen. So the audio is obviously still working, but I don't have any video other than some stuff about the 40-minute limit of meetings and stuff like that. Anyway, I think, I'm, just, I need a point of clarification. I thought when we had a brief conversation along these lines at our last meeting, it was clear that we needed to, the zoning commission was not going to get a public hearing without a vote on something. We were going to have to vote, yes, we plan to opt out, or yes, we plan to accept. And we're calling a public hearing on that position. Is that not true?
Yes, we would have, we would do that. But remember, for us to, after the public hearing, for us to approve it, requires a two-thirds vote.
Well, yeah, I know, but since we always use, you know, we have a tradition of attendance, good attendance by alternates, and we always have six votes. So you have to have four to have any majority. I mean, the majority is always the four at least.
Correct.
And so, yeah.
We know that.
Okay, so.
So we We have a public hearing on this question, and then we vote on the question.
But we've already taken a position. If we're going to call a public hearing, we have to have a vote tonight.
We have to have a vote for a public hearing on the question.
On the question?
Same thing, it's the same thing with the moratorium on cannabis. We didn't vote, do anything. We just voted to discuss it. So are you saying yes?
What am I saying? Yes, too. Yes, I'm in favor of opting out.
A public hearing.
Yes, I'm in favor of a public hearing.
To discuss.
Hundred percent.
Opting out. Okay, good. Donna?
I'm good. I agree.
Okay, so do we need a vote, Mike, to schedule it, or will you just schedule a public hearing for us?
I like to conservative approach and say, yes, let's, let's have a vote to schedule a public hearing. It would be your second meeting in November. I can pull the calendar up.
I think it's November 15th.
Yeah, in our November meeting.
That works, yeah, because they only meet once in November, as Kevin pointed out, so.
Can we have a motion to schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing. And I think we actually got to state what, what the reg would say with, to actually opt out of the state PA 2129.
On ADUs.
Well, okay.
I'll second it.
Do we have it? Okay. All in favor?
Right.
Hi.
Opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay, so carry six, nothing. Mike, please schedule a public hearing on opting out of the ADU provision of the statute.
PA 2129.
Again, thank you, Laura. This is, this is really good. Okay, the next item on the agenda is recreational cannabis, but that's public hearing, so there's
Yeah. Dave, I just kept this on the, on the agenda. You have the, the language for the moratorium is actually in your packet. That'll be a public hearing at our next meeting. But that language basically handles all the licenses. So this is very comprehensive, and we can discuss it at the next meeting. But that's, that's the text amendment that will be, will be subject to a public hearing in two weeks.
Okay.
The next meeting is the public hearing.
Correct.
Right. The public hearing will be at our next meeting.
But I know, I know at our last meeting, the commission said you'd want to see the text of the amendment. So that's why I kept this on here. That's also why I uploaded it to your packet. So it's, so I created a new folder for, I think it was cannabis moratorium, is where the language is in right now.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me just ask you a question, Mike, because, you know, I'm, I think that the language, I don't dispute the language. I just want to raise the question of the very end, I think it's the last statement. The, no. Oh, yeah, it's, it's a sub-paragraph C, so it's 13C, so on the third page or however you lay it out. But 13C, it refers to the applicability, it's the subheading. But it talks about the application submitted to the, for the approval of any cannabis establishment shall be denied. I thought what we had agreed on was that we weren't accepting applications. Because if you deny that, you know, by reference to denial, you had to have accepted it if you're denying it, no?
So when you establish the moratorium, legally, we can't not accept an application. But when a moratorium is in place, we basically can say no to everything. And it's, it's, it's kind of, the applicant's kind of like said, like, you know, it's on pause right now. We're determining. But that's, that's usually how you're supposed to handle those applications through a moratorium, not just simply we're refusing any applications. It's more, it's got to be denied.
But it's not permitted now. It's prohibited.
Well, well, one could argue that too, right? You're right, you're right, right now, for two reasons. It's not, it's not a specific use in your regulations, we can have that, we can win that argument, but more importantly, you can't get a license from the state because there's no licensing program yet.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I, I, I'm clear enough now, but I, I just don't want to see people standing in line at, at your front door to get, uh, their application in for the one license we're going to be authorized to support if we go forward with the, you know, approval. Or fail to disapprove or whatever. But, you know, the way this suggests, and, and what you're saying then is, is that, yeah, somebody, I don't know what form they would use, but they could apply. And you'll just have to put their application in a pile. And it'll sit there for a year, or until we resolve the moratorium.
Well, you put in your application, you, you pay your fee, and then we tell you it's, it's denied, and we take the fee.
Right, so it's not sitting in a pile to be considered at any other point after that, right?
They, they would have, they would have to come back when we have a regulation in place.
Yep. And nobody would make the application anyway, given that there's a moratorium.
Okay.
Okay, are we clear on that? Okay, Mike, um, our correspondence and regulation update.
So I, I don't have anything to, to add. Um, I haven't heard from the, the chamber at this point. Um, so we have the signed regulations that are, are hanging out there. Um, I don't know if the commission wants to, we forwarded to them, we haven't heard from them. Um, it would be nice to, to wrap that project up this year, too.
I think we should put it back on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay.
We have, I have written an email to Richmond. Uh, I have mentioned it in the, um, government, government affairs meeting in July, when I was at the chamber, uh, there in a Zoom meeting with the government affairs committee, and said we really wanted to get a, uh, a reply. And, uh, we've heard nothing from them, so I think we've given them long enough.
Yeah, that is a reply. No replies, that's a reply.
Anyhow, so we can, we can, uh, schedule some time to, uh, debate the issues in that. And I think the main issue is the, uh, is the backlit signs and what's the other one? Is there anything else in there that's really, uh, I think the idea of segregating out the Route forty-four corridor uh, was something that we thought we could consider. Okay, any, uh, any other business?
I, I had, I had two more things, Dave, I wanted to mention. One is very brief, but at the risk of sounding like a pain in the neck, I, we had figures from Mike a year ago, more than a year ago now. No, yes, two years ago, as of ten, one, twenty nineteen. Figures on enrollments in the schools when we were trying to see what the implications of all the new apartment buildings, what that was on. And I think it was two months ago, although that would have been in the summer. Maybe it was July, in July meeting, that, um, you mentioned this, Mike, the same time I brought a copy and I was going to mention it, but did you, you have actually given this, this thing to someone to update the figures, if I remember right. I wondered if you could just remind them we're, we're still interested, whoever's. Okay.
Actually, Neil, Neil Sullivan shared me the updated figures. I can upload, upload it to the, or I'll email it to the group, um, tonight.
Okay, I'm just concerned that one of these days our friends from, uh, on the property at, uh, the old Hartford are going to come back with something that we may find troubling and, uh, you know, at some point, sooner rather than later, we're likely to be drawn into a conversation about what's going on with the implications for the school systems and enrollment and cost to the taxpayers for all these apartments. And it would be very good to have in our hands current figures.
Yeah, so I have my figures, figures from the board of that now.
Okay, thank you. Then the other thing, uh, huh. Hmm, well, let me pass. I just forgot, it was so important, I forgot, so, uh, whatever it was, it'll come back.
It'll come back.
All right, let me take the pressure off you. I have a, 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 an item that I want to, you know, as a next thing after signs, I'd like to see us actually address, um, the Village Zone District in Terrifil. I mean, it's been on the, it's been talked about for a long, long time. Um, the design review boards, you know, talked about it, and we've never really come out with special regulations. And, I mean, you know, I go into Terrifil, I mean, going to Collinsville on a Sunday, that place is booming. And I just think that, you know, with the, with a little bit of help from us, I think we could get a really thriving, um, village up in, in Terrifil. And so I'd like to see what we could do. And, you know, we have to deal with, you know, they've got the, some of the storefronts that are right on the road with no parking, so what can we do to make that legal? Um, uh, you know, we got the church that is, is in transition. Um, I just think we, we should take a look to see what we can do that would help that, um, that community just become more alive with, you know, with the right regulations. I think most of it's now R fifteen, and that's probably not the right regulation for that village. I mean, that's, when you talk about traditional neighborhood development, that is traditional neighborhood development. I mean, that's, that's what we're talking about when we, we say that. And here we got it historically, and we're not allowing it to, to, to work.
Well, what, what do we have that's missing?
Um, well, I mean, it is an R fifteen zone, and that doesn't really cut it as a, um, as a, a traditional development.
In, in what way? I don't understand.
Well, you mean, you need to liberalize parking and not have, you know, not require as much parking as you would in an R fifteen zone. Um, I just think that we need to take a look to see what can be done. Um, that would be specific to Terrifil.
Okay, I, I have no problem with that. I think that's a good idea. The, the Plan for Conservation Development of two thousand and seven talked about having individual districts with their own regulations. And I, and I think that's a good idea, so I don't mean.
Yeah, I mean, there was a, we did a little mini charrette and, and we tog, and that never really went anywhere after we, you know, we, I, I think we hired some consultants to do that. And then, you know, we had the meetings, but nothing was ever put together afterwards, right, Mike? And so I'd like to see something done in Terrifil. And I don't know if we, you know, if we can do it internally with our, you know, existing staff, or do we need to hire a consultant? But if you need to hire a consultant, then we need to, you know, get ready for the, for the, you know, the budget cycle so that there is some money in there if we need more money.
I actually have some funds that could be, uh, placed, put to that, uh, study. I have a capital account.
Don't tell Mike Doyle, because if he gets elected to the Board of Finance, he'll take it away.
Let's, let's, let's.
We might have to take up a collection.
Um, yeah, that's, I, I, that's a great idea. Maybe we can have this conversation, because then, uh, at, at the next meeting, too.
Well, I, I would offer. Go on, Kevin.
I don't, I wasn't speaking, someone else was out there.
No, it was me. It was me saying that, you know, a village district like the center zone, uh, we could probably get a consultant, have a charrette with the people in Terrifil and, and discuss what they think they need. And, uh, go from there.
I don't know if I can, I can chime in as, am I allowed to chime in on this?
You certainly are.
Okay, I, I'm just going to say thank you, Kevin, for bringing that up, because, um, anecdotally, I've been hearing a lot of kind of, there's been a lot of movement, actually, in, in kind of the Terrifil Village, like, there's been some people buying properties, I've seen some activity, um, and I think the general consensus is, we want to do stuff, but they can't do anything, you know? And so if there were anything that could be done to help, and I think parking is a huge issue, um, if there is anything that could be done, I, I am sure that the folks in Terrifil would be very interested in being actively involved in that. So I think that's, um, I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Good, Mike, in your court then.
Well, let me, let me just mention one more thing. I, that idea of a consultant, I think that there's always room for that option, because, uh, we just don't know what we don't know. And we can all sit around in a room, and we can think about it and talk about it for a long time, but we're not really going to be able to introduce, you know, real life, you know, uh, options that are in place in other communities in the country that are potentially, uh, reflecting, you know, new strategies and new approaches. And I offer this, the, in the next couple of weeks, I, I encourage everyone to make an effort to, you know, online, read the, either the LA Times or one of the big papers out there. In the last two weeks, the, the state of California has made huge inroads at eliminating, totally, completely eliminating, single-family, uh, zoning. Um, and, and they're doing that, although it's complicated and I don't get all of it, but there are some techniques that have been legislated for subdividing parcels that were not previously allowed. And so their strategy as a state now, sort of in motion, is to eliminate single-family zoning. And so, you know, residential isn't going away. And, and actually, it's the single-family, in fact, not, so you might still have a single-family lot, but it could have multiple dwelling units on it. So there's something going on on the West Coast that you should sort of tune in at some point. I, you know, just my suggestion.
They also have eliminated single-family zoning in Minneapolis, I believe.
Oh, that's right, I think I saw.
That's another one, and.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not so sure that our constituents will, um, think that's a wonderful idea unless the alternative is, is.
Well, it might fit some, some sections of, uh, Terrifil. Uh, I don't know. But my sister-in-law lives in, in Minneapolis, and I can attest to the fact that the lots are tiny. The houses are so close together that I don't know that they're going to squeeze in a lot more units, but they must, or they wouldn't have done that.
And that, and that's a fact in California, you know, most of the California development uh, has been done post, post-war. And what they do is they buy a plot of land and they shoehorn as many houses as they can into them. And they're typically on fifth acre, fifth acre plots or less. So the, the average lot size in California is not large. And when the Westerners come here, they're surprised that we aren't living elbow to elbow.
Well, what the LA Times said was that three-quarters, and they quoted a study done by a guy at Berkeley, that says three-quarters of the developable land in the state of California, I didn't, they didn't offer the definition of developable land, but three-quarters of the developable land is zoned single-family right now.
Okay, but, but that goes along with the, um.
That doesn't mean they're all, you know, the R fifteen size, or, or whatever, I mean.
But the same thing is going on here with, um, with the ninety percent of our land is single-family zone, I mean.
But we don't have the people at the state borders waiting to get in like they do in California. Because of the climate and the, you know, all sorts of attractions.
But they're leaving there now.
Oh. Okay, that's enough about California.
That's enough about California. They're going to Nevada and all those places.
Right, where the fires aren't so bright, I guess.
Fires aren't so bright. Okay, anything more? Here, motion to adjourn. Mike, motion, anybody second?
I'll second.
Second, I, Anne, she's on the same side as, as Mike. All in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Opposed? Thanks, guys.
Okay, have a good night.
Yeah.
Night.